I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Hingham Select Board. It is May 21st, 5:30 PM. First order of business is executive session. First, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the Massachusetts Land Court, Docet Number 22 PS 000551 pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Section 20A 3. And second, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the Massachusetts Land Court, Docet Number 22 MISC 00468 pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A 3.
Do you want to do the remote language? Do we need to do that first?
We probably do before I make the declaration. Good point.
You're just right there.
Okay. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, we move on to my declaration. Before I entertain a motion to go into executive session under Item 2 of the agenda, I hereby declare that discussion of this agenda item is in an open session, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to enter executive session, one to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the Massachusetts Land Court, Docet Number 22 PS 000551 pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A 3 and 2, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the Massachusetts Land Court, Docet Number 22 MISC 000468 pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A 3. The Select Board will convene in open session after the executive session.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. We move to executive session. We will resume afterwards. Next item, if you are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. I'm ready on the May 7th minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated May 7th, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe? Aye. I am an aye as well. Next, we have Maddie's Promise proclamation. Liz, would you like to tee this off for us?
Sure.
Because you are wearing, proudly wearing the shirt.
I am proudly wearing the shirt. Do you want me to read the proclamation?
Well, before we do, do we have anyone who'd like to speak?
Do you want to, so we have Ann McCoy here, Maddie's mom.
Please, if you want to address us. We, well, it's.
It's okay, I would love to say.
And we would be honored to hear from you.
Thank you. It is, it is an honor. I think this is probably our third year. We're coming up on five years, having lost Maddie. And, you know, I just thank the town for the support. I'll never get used to this, but, but it really means a lot to us. And, you know, I plug away trying to make progress towards rhabdomyosarcoma and all childhood cancer, and I'm really grateful for the support of my efforts. So, thank you. I live, we live in the best community in the world.
Yeah, and really, it's because we have residents like you that we're, we're just so honored, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz, would you have the honor?
I would be happy to. Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, Maddie's Promise Day, whereas Maddie's Promise is a nonprofit organization that was started in memory of Hingham resident Madeline Maddie McCoy in 2019, and whereas Maddie has used her courage, gentle spirit, and generosity to bring a smile to everyone she met, and whereas Maddie created art to sell to raise money for pediatric cancer while receiving treatment at Boston Children's Hospital, and whereas Maddie has been an inspiration to all who met her and hear about her courageous battle with rhabdomyosarcoma, a rare and aggressive type of cancerous tumor of the soft tissue, and whereas Maddie has inspired the creation of nonprofit Maddie's Promise, and whereas Maddie's Promise seeks to help others forward with the goal of closing the funding gap of rare pediatric cancers. Now therefore, we, Joseph M. Fisher, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 23rd, 2024, as Maddie's Promise Day in the Town of Hingham, and urge all citizens to observe this day by emulating the spirit and attitude of Maddie McCoy and being the change the world needs. Voted this 21st day of May 2024, signed, Joseph M. Fisher, Chair, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein.
I will accept a motion there.
I will make a motion to proclaim Thursday, May 23rd, 2024, as Maddie's Promise Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Can I ask one question?
Please.
Ann, I know you changed the date for the event. It's going to be in October?
Yes.
And what, is it 19th?
Friday, October, it goes to 18th.
18th?
Yes.
Excellent. Great.
A little bit. Excellent.
Great. Next item on our agenda is an application for a restaurant common victualer all alcoholic beverages license, an entertainment license by Bartaco Hingham LLC, doing business as Bartaco, 94 Derby Street, Suite 217, Hingham. Alyssa Valdez Pablo, did I pronounce that right? Manager. So, is she here? Is Dennis here? Who?
Yes, sir.
I don't, let's get them up on the screen. Great. If you could walk us through.
If I, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. My name's Dennis Quilty. I'm the attorney representing the applicant before the board tonight, and thank you for having us, Mr. Chairman and members of the Select Board. With, with me tonight is Alyssa Valdez Pablo, who is the proposed manager of record, as well as Kelsey Canias, who is a operations director for Bartaco. Thank you. And, and again, looking through things online, it was, I'm pretty sure they held an all-alcohol license because they described things such as whiskeys and things of that nature. So, I, I hope what we're doing is replacing one restaurant which held an all-alcohol license with another. For those members who are not familiar with Bartaco, I did supply to the staff earlier today a number of photographs of some of their other locations, as well as floor plan and renderings of the style of the location in Hingham. This is a, a business which has operated very, very successfully throughout the country. It has three locations in greater Boston, the, in the Seaport, in the Fenway neighborhood, and in the town of Brookline. They are a well-run operation. I've represented the, the two locations in the city, and I can tell you that they have no violations in their history there, which is back at least five-plus years. We are seeking a, an entertainment license merely for recorded background music. I have information on the, you know, the square footage, the occupancy number, the hours of operation requested. If you'd like me to go into those, or would you like to have us take questions now? I just want to say before I end that Ms. Valdez Pablo is a Mass. resident and is familiar with the rules and regulations of the ABCC and regulations regarding sale and service of alcohol. She's a former employee of the Del Frisco Restaurant Corp., so she has lengthy experience in the business.
Excuse me one second. Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I'm fine. I, we'd be happy to take your questions.
Now, this, and this is a very thorough application. Liz, do you have any questions on this?
So, thank you. It is a very thorough and lengthy application. It looks complete, and I believe the police chief has reviewed it.
They have.
And everything is in order. Thank you for the, the photos and the menu. It looks like the occupancy is 180?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the seating inside and out, outside, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Excellent. I don't have any other questions. It looks like everything's here, and I have been personally waiting for this to open, quite anxiously.
Can she reserve a table now, I think is the question.
We are very excited you're coming to Hingham.
Yes. Bill?
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. The hours of operation fit with, with the Derby Street area. The police department has obviously reviewed the applications on board with it, so best of luck with your, with your new business.
Thank you very much.
Were there, did you need to go before any of the other permitting boards, the zoning board, planning board, health department, and if so, have you completed that?
Health, I presume will be an ongoing matter as we, you know, have inspections and the like. I am unaware, I do not believe that zoning is required, given the use is a similar use to that, which has taken place, you know, in the location. So, I think health will be an ongoing, you know, workaround with the town, you know, as we get closer to opening.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't see any reason, you're not changing a parking demand, and you're not changing use, so I didn't see any reason. I just wanted to check that, check that box.
Yes, sir.
Are there, are there any members of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I am willing to accept a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the application for a restaurant common victualer all alcoholic beverages license by Bartaco Hingham LLC, doing business as Bartaco, 94 Derby Street, Suite 217, Hingham. Alyssa Valdez Pablo, manager, filed with the Town of Hingham on March 25th, 2024, with the following operating hours. Sunday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday, 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM. This approval is subject to the approval of all applicable town departments, submission of a valid certificate of insurance evidencing liquor legal liability insurance coverage, and at least a minimum statutory amount, and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. We have a second motion on this?
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of an entertainment license to Bartaco Hingham LLC, doing business as Bartaco, 94 Derby Street, Suite 217, for background music in the restaurant and outdoor patio area during the following operating hours, Monday through Sunday, 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Thank you for the presentation. It was really quite thorough.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I do want to say that the staff person was extremely helpful in this process, so thank you for, for that help. Appreciate it.
Excellent.
Next item on our agenda, to consider approval of three special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Break Rock Brewing LLC for the Weir River Farm Sunset Picnics to be held on Thursday, June 20th, 2024, and Thursday, June 27th, 2024, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and Thursday, July 11th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Do we have Jay Southwood?
Hello, everyone.
And Ann Smith White?
Good evening, everybody.
Great. So, one of you can walk us through this, please.
I'm happy to, Jay, if you want.
Sure.
So, this is our fourth year of Sunset Picnics at Weir River Farm on Thursday nights. Break Rock Brewing is, will be providing beer and beverages, and then we will also have a food truck and live music. And this is part of our series that runs from the middle of June until the middle of September.
Tom, where are we in terms of police review?
Police have reviewed it, and everything is in order.
Liz, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I know this has run very smoothly and successfully in the past, and I see that the police have signed off on it. It looks like there, a police detail is not required, and it looks like the attendance is kind of anywhere between 100 and 300. Ann, what was the attendance like last year? I know it's weather-dependent, but.
It's, it's definitely weather-dependent. Yeah, somewhere between, usually between 150 and 300 was one of the biggest ones we had. Those are the ones in June are usually, everybody's so excited to get out.
Yes. And the, the sensory-friendly sunset picnic hour, how is that? I mean, I know how it's different, but in terms of this, was the setup the same with the food and?
It is.
And beer trucks?
We simply open an hour earlier, so families with individuals who have sensory sensitivities can come an hour early and enjoy, you know, the same setup, the same food and music, and then they can either choose to stay when the rest of the public comes at 6:00, or, or, you know, they can leave at their leisure.
Okay. Great. Thank you. No other questions.
Mr. Ramsey?
I have no questions. Thank you.
I notice this is one of several applications, and I'm also noting that there is no request for any rain dates for any of these. Is that, is that your understanding, that this is rain or shine?
That's right. These are, I don't know if you have that reception, unfortunately. These are, we cancel if the weather is really bad.
Okay.
So, no rain date.
Right. No rain dates. Great. Any member of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Break Rock Brewing LLC for the Weir River Farm Sunset Picnics to be held on Thursday, June 20, and Thursday, June 27, 2024, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and Thursday, July 11, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Great. Now, I noticed there's a second motion here that we are not going to be doing because that goes freely for the next one, I believe, because that is for Stellwagen.
So, same event, but Stellwagen.
Right.
Special dates, um, different dates, I think.
So, we've got different dates, and Ann, you're still on the hook, but we've got Michael Snowdell?
I don't think he's on.
Okay. So, give us the very quick rundown on this one.
Same event?
Yep.
Different dates.
Any difference in how they're going to be conducted?
No. Nope.
And Tom, I believe the police chief has signed off on this?
They have, yes.
Great. Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
And I have no questions. Any member of the public have questions? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Stellwagen Beer Company LLC for the Weir River Farm Sunset Picnics to be held on Thursday, July 18th, July 25th, and August 1st, 2024, from 6:00 o'clock PM to 9:00 o'clock PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to consider.
Sorry. It's the same event for vitamin C.
Right. It's, this is license to Vitamin C Brewing LLC for the Weir River Farm Sunset Picnics to be held on Thursday, August 9th, August 15th, and August 22nd, 2024, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. Ann, is this going to be you, or do we have Rich? Anyone else wanted to say anything?
I'm still here.
I know you're still here, but are, are your, any compatriots going along with you? No, so.
Rich is here.
Oh, yes. There you are. So, please, is there anything you'd like to add to the eloquent presentations we've had thus far?
I don't, I don't think so. It's, you know, it's a great event, and we love doing them, and it's, it's going to be a lot of fun, but it's obviously just as Ann described, so we're looking forward to it.
Bill, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Liz?
No questions.
And Tom, again, I assume the police have approved this?
Police chief has signed off, yeah.
Great. Any member of the public with comments or questions? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing LLC or the Weir River Farm Sunset Picnics to be held on Thursday, August 8th, August 15th, and August 22nd, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. We now move on to another vitamin C. To consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing for the Summer Solstice at World's End to be held on Saturday, June 22nd, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, with a rain date of Sunday, June 23rd, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Rich, do you want to take this one away?
Sure. This one takes place at, at World's End. It's on Planters Hill. Everybody goes up to the hill, watches a beautiful sunset. There's going to be food by several vendors, ice cream also. There's a Widowmaker will be along, will be there along with us, serving beer. Aldous Collins will be, will be the musician there, and I'm sure everybody knows who he is, fantastic musician. So, yeah, another, yeah, another great event, another fun, family-friendly event.
Vehicular traffic at this one is different from the others. How is that handled in terms of parking?
We invite everybody in to park on the hill at World's End, so we have, you know, it's lots of staff and volunteers directing parking, and there shouldn't be any overlap between parking and pedestrians because it's sort of one way.
Do we have an officer who's required for directing parking?
We're working with the traffic officer to determine that. We haven't needed one the last couple of years.
Yeah, I can see no.
No, I didn't see it either.
There's just a note that they're working with Sergeant Kilroy.
Yes.
And I know this event has also been very successful in previous years. It, just a note that it is one of the tier-one events at World's End, and certainly one of the larger events with 1,000-plus people expected. But I don't have any questions or concerns.
Bill?
It's just with 1,000 people, it would seem to me that a police detail would probably be prudent, but obviously I defer that to the police department.
Right.
1,000 people on, on the roads in and out of World End are very narrow.
Yeah.
I know it's a vehicular event, but anybody walking on those roads, it's, it's a little concerning, but obviously I'll defer to the judgment of the police department about police details. I, I would, I'm shocked they don't, not going to require at least two people to be there, but.
Right. Because it's, it's not just parking, it's getting in and out as well.
Yeah.
Exactly.
We're happy to provide a detail if that's what's determined.
Yes.
Great.
Are there any members of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing LLC for the Summer Solstice at World's End to be held on Saturday, June 22nd, 2024, from 5:00 o'clock PM to 9:00 o'clock PM, with a rain date of Sunday, June 23rd, 2024, from 5:00 o'clock PM to 9:00 o'clock PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. We move on to the next one.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Now, to, to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to WM Brewing Company, Inc., doing business as Widowmaker Brewing for the Summer Solstice at World's End, to be held on Saturday, June 22nd, 2024, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, with a rain date of Sunday, June 23rd, 2024, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. Ann, any comments?
Just, I appreciate how efficient we're being tonight. Thank you all.
I mean, as we go through this, we have different vendors participating in the same event. We just want to make sure that our eyes are dotted as we move forward. So, I didn't see anything different here. I had no questions. Liz?
No questions.
It should be all the same.
Yes, and Ann does a great job. I guess just to reiterate, I know there will be food, I'm sure water, not in plastic bottles, and other things available for sale, but no, no concerns with, with Widowmaker.
Bill?
Yeah, no concerns. I guess my, I guess my only question would be, I mean, have, has the police department reviewed these requests?
They have. Dave signed off on them.
So, Dave did sign off on them? Okay. Because we should be the last stop. Yeah, right. We should be the last stop.
Yeah.
I don't think, I, I thought the standard operating procedure was they weigh in on details first, then it comes to us, because it is alcohol-related. So, I'm a little weary about approving events of 1,000 people, 1,500 people, where the police department hasn't fully vetted it. I mean, Dave signed off on it, correct?
He did, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, they're going to have an event of 1,500 people, and they haven't even raised the issue of a potential detail? That is a little concerning to me. The last one was 1,000.
I will note that these are a little bit distant. We probably have time. It's not until we have.
Yeah.
We only proved, we proved the previous one.
Right.
We're not even putting language in here, it's subject to a police detail or approval by the police department. It just, I thought they vetted all these before they came to us, so, not sure.
His signature on it is.
His vet. Okay.
But to your point, he's noting that they're going to work with the people on.
Well, I, I think.
Yeah.
Bill, I, one approach is we can approve this, and we will be meeting with the. and we will be meeting with the police chief, and as the police commissioners, we can make sure and direct that there will be a officer or officers available. So I think...
Well, the reason why I rave it, we do get concerns from Butters in World's End, and we've... Yeah, there are a lot of, I mean, these are great events, wonderful events, I've been there myself, but we do get emails and concerns by Butters about Tier One events. I worked on the plane and bought permit for Tier One events. I, I thought the police detail were automatically included, so I'm not... But you can go forward, I'm, I'm going to abstain on this one. I think it's a lot of people concerned that hasn't been properly vetted by the police department.
Liz, you have the concern?
I, so the Tier One events, they should be reviewed and coordinated with Hingham Police and Fire Department in advance. I would be, the police department case-by-case review, police details for deployed, will be deployed for Tier One events. I can't imagine they're not going to have a police detail. So we should just follow up with, I think, Chief Jones on that.
Yeah, I will, we will make sure, and I would say that...
I'm happy if it's...
Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, I'm happy to, to work on that if that's, if that's a concern. We, we have had details in years, and we have, there have been other years when we haven't, and we're happy to provide a detail if that makes everybody feel safer.
Yeah, so...
I have no problem with that. We can move forward with that.
I think we heard at the last hearing, at the last item we voted on for 1,000, that she agreed to do it. I just heard it again, so we now have a representation on the record that there will be a police detail. So I'm comfortable moving forward. Was there someone else in the public who had a comment or question? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to WM Brewing Company Incorporated, doing business as Widowmaker Brewing for the Summer Solstice at World's End to be held on Saturday, June 22, 2024, from 5 o'clock PM to 9 o'clock PM, with a rain date of Sunday, June 23, 2024, from 5 o'clock PM to 9 o'clock PM.
Bill, do you want a second?
No, I'm going to abstain.
Then I will second. Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Abstention.
Joe? Yes, so it is approved.
Great, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Hingham Maritime Center Annual Update. So are you familiar with Weekend Update on Saturday Night Live?
Yes.
This is, we're going to...
I don't think I'll compare.
Okay, come on.
Yeah, you're funny.
So please, and I know we have a presentation that you've given to us.
Oh, you are? Are you in presentation mode? Okay. First and foremost, I want to thank you all very much for providing us with the opportunity to present today and let you know a little bit more about what we've done over the last year. My name's Amy Conley. I'm the executive director down at the Hingham Maritime Center, and I'm pleased to say that I'm joined with Liza McKinnon, our board president today. As many of you know, we've been providing access to Hingham Harbor for over 53 years, mainly through sailing and then rowing programs, but as you'll see this evening, we are proud to say that we're expanding our athletic and educational programs in an effort to broaden our scope and share this wonderful resource with the community at large. Our core values remain the same, with safety being paramount, followed by respect for our environment, fun, and community building. We are thrilled to say that we have a new dock system. HMC applied for a grant and received it in conjunction with the town, which, in the pictures below, you can see that Sea White is installing the system there, and that happened last May. This is many years in the making, and it allows us to expand our programming. Overall, we served more than 1,000 participants in the summer of 2023. Specifically in sailing, we offer nine classes that range from beginner for youth and adults to competitive racing for our youth. Our rowing offerings include eight different types of classes, ranging from a learn-to-row for both youth and adults, as well as recreational rowing and high school development that works on race skills. Little Mariners, I'm pleased to say that our trial program of Little Mariners, which is a marine science program for five-to-seven-year-olds, was a huge success. These kids learned about our harbor, they learned about the types of species that live there, participated in practical lab work, and created some marine-related arts and crafts. We are already booking out our summer 2024 programs, so... Paddle boarding. We purchased 10 paddle boards at the beginning of last season, and that was another successful trial that we, program that we ran. In addition to using them within their own programs, we successfully integrated them into other programs like our youth rowing and youth sailing, and that integration has enhanced the overall experience by providing additional opportunities for skill development, team building, and fun on the water. And in 2024, we're offering both adult and youth classes, and they are filling out. While HMC is well-known for our youth programs, I want to highlight the success of our adult programs as well. We have more than 215 adult participants. 215, I said, right, in sailing, rowing, and now paddle boarding. In fact, our adult sail and row programs are seeing an uptick this year. This past year, we had the crew team with us in late spring and all fall. It's a very popular sport with over 100 kids, and we provide them with their access to the water. It's an incredible opportunity for the high school students. The sailing team also joined us on the wharf in the spring. They, they come in in March and they leave in May. You can see their boats there to the right on the dock, and then the two teams in the picture to the left there. We're proud to say that we have an even split of male and female employees in an industry that is typically unbalanced. As noted, many of them got their start here at Barnes Wharf, and a lot of them are on the high school teams. So once we get them in the door, they don't tend to leave, they tend to stay. It's amazing to see the wonderful community that these kids foster. We, this is a fun slide. We celebrate our employees' hard work and accomplishments through our Employee of the Week program. Every other week, one staff member is selected to be acknowledged. We celebrate them by providing a lunch of their choice in the preferred theme of their choice. The lunch is displayed for all and is appreciated by both the staff and the participants. And I'll explain this slide on the top left. Maisy is having a very fancy meal up on the dock. The middle slide is she decided on a princess-themed luncheon, and we built a castle for her. You can see the turret in the background out of plastic flotation. Jack is having a picnic sushi lunch on Langley Island. We dropped him off with his lunch and came back and picked him up. And Jackson, down in the right-hand corner, had a fine dining experience on the docks. So we cooked him up a steak and brought it down there. The camaraderie is really unbelievable with the group of kids that we have down there, and it's a fantastic place for them to work.
So Tom, are you taking notes for the town employees, town hall, how are you going to?
What you have to do, right, to get the best staff.
That's right.
Volunteer board members. Our board is comprised of 16 volunteer board members in 2023, many of whom participate in our programming. Our fleet is 115 boats and counting. We have 74 sailboats, which, a few of them you can see there. And we have 32 rowing shells, ranging from singles to quads to even an eight-suite. Other assets, of course, we have a fleet of safety launches and equipment that include trailers, powerboats, trucks, but we wanted to highlight the new docks again. We're so excited to have newer, bigger, and better dock system, and you can really see the difference in the photo there. On the left, that was last about a year and a half ago, and the new docks on the right just allow us to enlarge our programs and just expand what we have to offer, because we can get more people down there, and we can use it simultaneously with the high school teams in the spring and the fall, so that's huge. Yep, partnerships and scholarships. Outside of our traditional offerings, we work with Sunset Point, which is a Catholic charities camp, to provide an unforgettable camp experience. In 2023, we helped 60 campers and staff get on the water. Campers got the chance to sail around Hingham Harbor with HMC employees, and this has been such a success that they have asked us to try to get them out on the paddle boards as well. As it relates to scholarships, sorry. As it relates to scholarships, we offered over $2,000 in scholarship money for youth participants who otherwise would not have been able to get out on the water last year. Harbor Feast, our largest fundraiser, hosted in conjunction with the Hingham High School Sailing and Rowing Teams, was a great success. With more than 300 people joining us at Barnes Wharf, we were able to educate them on what we do and boost our fellow programs. The night was capped off with a live auction that was enjoyed by all, with the Harbor Master Boat Ride being such a big hit that he offered up too. Overall, 2023 was a great success, but a picture says 1,000 words. So at the end of the presentation, I'd like to share a quick video of what happens here at HMC, and I will try not to cry, because that video gets me every time. What's on deck? Before the video, we wanted to give you a sneak peek of what we have coming up. So as you remember, we touched on this last year, the importance of blue space and the positive impact on mental and physical health. We're passionate about this subject, and as such, we'd like to share the vision we have to provide access and opportunities beyond athletics. As such, we've made efforts over the winter to connect with Hingham High Schools and other organizations to expand educational programs. We're pleased to be hosting the Derby Academy Field Trip next week, SNAP this summer, and we're working towards offering educational programming in conjunction with Hingham High School Biology and Marine Sciences in the fall of 2024, as well as field trips and et cetera, to the elementary schools and middle school age group. And we haven't forgotten about the big kids. We're also looking to partner with Linden Ponds.
What are you doing with Linden Ponds?
We are hoping, so we are waterfront access for all, and we're hoping that we can just have them down. We have a lot of nice picnic tables. We have the idea of getting some nice, easy-to-get-in picnic tables where they don't have this edge that you have to step over. They're, the benches are attached at the ground level, that they can come down and just have a nice picnic lunch and enjoy the view down there. And if you haven't seen the view from Barnes Wharf, it's absolutely incredible. So they can see the, all the programming in action. Making waves. So last but not least, we're making waves in the community through a partnership with Untold Brewing, a local microbrewery in Situate, which is owned by a Hingham residence. This is a monthly beer garden hosted at Barnes Wharf. It gives us the opportunity to not only raise money, but educate folks from our community that don't necessarily participate in our programming, on what we do at, here at HMC. The first night was a success despite the weather. It rained until about 5, and then the sun peeked through and people started coming down. So we had, you know, we got 100 people down there for that night, and it went really, really well. Our next event is coming up, June 13, so please mark your calendars and join us down there. The sunset will not disappoint. Now on to the video. This video is created by Jack Burns, a valued participant, employee, and the Hingham High School Class of 2024 valedictorian. The video succinctly showcases our activities and highlights the importance of our water access to the community, and like I said, it gets me every time I watch it, so...
I love the community. I feel really supported whenever I come here. I love talking to everyone, and I just have a really great time every single day I show up to work.
My favorite part about coming to HMC is we get to go out on the water and row around and just have a nice relapse of time off the hard work.
I took everything from beginner sail and youth rowing to 420 race and high school development for rowing, and I absolutely loved every second of it, mostly because it's super fun in and of itself, both sailing and rowing, but also my instructors have always historically been amazing, and so have my classmates, and it's just a really awesome environment.
I like how I get to sail almost every day in the sun.
HMC is always one of the highlights of my summer. I spend most days here, sometimes morning to night, and even after my shift is over, I'll end up staying and volunteering just because I'm having so much fun. It's really special that we get to spend our summers with people that we're so close with and are just so awesome to be around. I feel like we just have such a great community here, and just every day is so much fun, no matter what we do. It's, we're always laughing. It's really cool to like meet all these kids and watch them progress and really see how much more comfortable they become to sport, and it's really nice to see everyone fall in the, fall in love with the water the way that we have and want to keep coming back after classes. Brilliant. It's formative.
Moisturous.
Arrgh.
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 Kena.
Epic.
Enriching.
Energizing.
Amazing.
I think it's funny, sometimes people say, oh, wait, are you that place at the Rotary? And we'll say, yes, please go to the website and see what we do. Because it's hard to explain that, what that video shows and how many people that we actually affect out there. You know, we're kind of tucked away on the other side of the Rotary, but we're, we're doing great things. I promise you that.
Thank you. So do we have this video as part of our record?
No.
So I mean, the Select Board record, do you have a copy of the video?
You have the hyperlink.
Okay, so we can make available, I'll inform members of the public that copies of the video will be made available through the Select Board office. And you said that it's available on a link on the, on the web?
It is, it is on our homepage of our website as well.
Because I thought it was very informative. Just, I just had a couple of questions. I saw the boats, and you mentioned the fleet. What, what is the age of the fleet? And how, how is it, how is it going in terms of? And I ask only because when I, when I was rowing, the shells were really old. It was like, they were heavy.
Well, you'll be happy to hear this.
Well, the quads are, we got your phone, you have a lot of the quads.
You did?
The heavy quads. And we turned one of them this week. But there are a lot of new singles.
If I can just interrupt, if you can come up so that members of the public who might be listening can actually hear you, that'd be great.
Liza McKinnon, I am the board president of the Maritime Center, of the Hingham Maritime Center. So I think you should come back and row. And, a little closer. The quads, I, I can get an exact age for you, but they are the older, wider quads I think that you're probably familiar with. However, we have, in terms of the rowing side of things, been able to purchase quite a few new singles. I think we have six new, brand-new singles and several recently donated singles. In terms of the age of the sailing fleet, Amy can speak to that more succinctly than I can. Some of them are new to us, but that doesn't mean they're necessarily new. But we do have several new boats that you can speak to.
Yes, so we are constantly refurbishing boats down there. We do have a maintenance manager, and he is able to help refurbish a lot of our older boats in the fleet. This year alone, we were given an earmark donation to do some repair work on our Rhodes 19 fleet, which if you're not familiar with that, it is a larger boat. And that is what we teach our adults in. It's also the first boat that we put our beginner sailors in so that they can get a feel for what it's like to go out on the water in a nice, big, safe boat, and then we put them in their own boat.
Sounds like it's harder to tip than the other boats.
But the, the Rhodes are older. Every couple of years, we'll be able to get a brand-new Opti or Pram, which is the beginner child sailboat. And then we were donated two brand-new 420s, which is the boat that the high school kids race through Hingham High School. So that is the class that we teach racing in as well. So the fleet is aging, and we are doing our best with fundraising to help turn over some of that, some of those 115 boats that I mentioned earlier.
And on a different topic, my recollection is that parking is a challenge down there. How is that working out?
So I'm very aware of when our programs start, when they end, adding new programs. And I have come up with a schedule that works out really nicely. We have a beautiful drop-off circle. And we, when we send out our welcome letters for our classes, parents know. They drive around the drop-off circle. Someone will greet their child. They can just exit the car and, and keep on their way. No, we don't have a ton of parking spaces. However, it does get better once our boats are in the water and they're off the, off the land, off the wharf. But we have been managing actually very well with what we have. And as far as our fundraisers go, we, people are happy to walk. You know, they've been parking at the bathing beach. They can park in the downtown public lots, and then they don't mind walking over. So that works out nicely.
That's great, thank you. Liz?
Excellent. Well, thank you, Amy, for coming tonight, and Liza for being here and all that you're doing. It's, the video is really powerful. We're certainly lucky to live here. And I appreciate that you value all the educational programs and really making sure that every resident and everyone that wants access to the water can get it. So thank you. And thank you for your partnership on the dock system. I know that was a labor of love for many. So glad to see that it's, it's working so well. And your partnership with the high school teams certainly does not go unnoticed. We appreciate that. And special congrats to Jack Burns. I love seeing his photos, and I was thrilled to see that he was Class of 2024 valedictorian. So very exciting. It's certainly a special place and lots of special people, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I did have one question, actually. You mentioned Linden Ponds. Would you be willing to work with the senior center here if you're not already?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Maybe we can get some buses to go down, a little field trip.
Definitely.
Okay.
We'll open the gate, he can drive right on the wharf.
Great, thank you.
Jennifer Young will reach out.
Bill?
Amy, thank you for your great leadership. Liza, you're a wonderful advocate, ambassador for the Maritime Center. The, the new programs that you talked about tonight, the partnership with the school department. I attended the event last Thursday, which was wonderful, great kickoff to the summer. So there's a lot of tremendous positive energy coming out of the Maritime Center, and I appreciate all you're doing down there. It's a great, great asset for the town and our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
If it doesn't rain.
Okay, you, you should say that in the mics.
There will be a lobster food truck at our June 13th event.
Come one, come all, that's, yeah, that'll, that'll be wonderful. Any members of the public, comments or questions? Oh, Clark, yes, please.
I, I can't resist, it's not why I'm here. Clark Fraser, 50, Bonnie Brier Circle. What I missed was kayaks. I can, fortunate that I can kayak from my backyard, but I don't know of any public kayak launch places in, in Hingham. There's one in Hall. They have these little boats that you can rent. But I would really appreciate having the ability to be able to easily launch a kayak from someplace without having to bring it on a trip.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should have asked Tom, was there anything that you wanted to add on this?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, great. Next, to consider approval of the agreement with Mass Pavement Reclamation, Inc. for equipment rental and labor. Kathy, there, okay. How are you?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes. So.
Randy's with us, too.
Yes. Do you want to start, Kathy?
Sure.
Okay.
The, this contract is bid every three years. The, it's for equipment rental and labor, so all the large street repairs and repaving and things like that. They rent the machines as they need them, and they have the labor that goes with them. And so we put it out to bid every three years. This vendor is the previous, the current vendor, who was the only bidder. But it is subject to mass dot approval or like a pre-qualified list, and they were on it. And so I think JR and DPW are happy with how it went, how the bid went.
Is there anything we can do when there's only one bidder? I mean, I can, we can't make people bid, but is it, is it a question of advertising? Or is there something else that, that we can do to approve?
Because this one was mass dot, it was a pre-qualified list, so it can only be those vendors. But we do advertise, you know, we reach out. So in this case in particular, there was a limited, but it's still a big list.
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know if this is, and maybe Randy can answer this, is, if this is a unique kind of thing, this equipment rental labor versus somebody who could come and just do the work with their own trucks, that sort of thing?
Randy, you have your hand raised.
Yes. So we realized there was one bidder, and JR reached out to the, several other DPWs and got their equipment contracts, and they're very similar.
Similar in terms of the dollar value?
Yes, yes.
But it is, it does use Chapter 90 money, and it's a three-year contract each year, subject to appropriation, obviously.
Bill, any questions?
No questions. I've reviewed the information material, appreciate the information, Kathy.
Liz?
Just clarifying, so this is just for equipment, not labor, or is it both?
It also includes labor, correct, Randy?
It's equipment and labor and rental of equipment if we need it.
Okay. So both, okay. And you've been happy with them in the past, Randy?
Oh, yes, yes, they've been a great contractor to work with.
Okay.
And, and do excellent work. And they do more than, they do sidewalks and ADR jobs that we need them to do. They're there to do it. And they, they have the capabilities.
Okay.
How are they in terms of the timeliness of their performance?
They're very timely. JR and I are in contact with them, and usually we schedule it out within a week.
Oh, that's great.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Tom, anything to add on this one?
Oh, I think Randy and Kathy summed it up.
Questions from members of the public? I'm prepared to take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the agreement with Mass Pavement Reclamation Incorporated for equipment rental and labor in an amount now to exceed up to $523,300 annually or up to $1,569,990 in total over three years.
Second.
Before we vote, Tom, am I correct that these dollar amounts are consistent with what is in our budget?
Yes.
Okay, great. Roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is to consider the approval of the agreement with Weston and Sampson Engineers for the Stoddard's Neck Sewer Replacement Project. Kathy, do you want to?
I'll probably defer to Randy to explain the project because the engineering is exempt from 30B, so it doesn't require procurement.
Right. Randy?
So this, this project has been engineered once. We did it back, I'm pretty sure it was 2018. We ran out of money, and it was, it was a contingent project. And it ended up, we needed an easement from the DCR. It's been difficult to get the easement from DCR. We finally did acquire it. I think it was last week, the commission signed the easement papers. And this main, we're changing the direction of the main to go through the DCR property directly to the MWRA for an easier flow so it doesn't get surcharged or backed up in the pipe, which actually happens now. And this contract is basically for design, bidding, and construction-related services associated with the realignment of the sewer main.
And you said this was engineered back in 2018?
Yeah, it was all engineered with a 24-inch main, and we ran out of money, we couldn't do it, and we, we didn't have the easement from the DCR. And I'm sorry, my camera's not on, I can't turn it on.
That's okay, we, we know what your pretty face looks like, so we're, we'll have to go, go with our memory on that. So when it was engineered in 2018, did you have the assistance of engineers, of this, you know, anyone from the sewer department?
Yes.
What was the involvement when, when the 2018 work was done?
So Weston and Sampson actually designed this, along with a Bradley Woods main project, is we changed the location of the main going into the force main because of main breaks.
Right.
So it goes back in through the shipyard and out to, right into a manhole by Shipyard Drive. Instead of having a deadhead into the force main, causing water hazards which caused main breaks. So we wanted to change that because the flow is better into the MWRA station, but we just ran out of money. And I, I do have $120,000 left, but there's no way I can do that project with just $120,000. And we didn't have the easement, the DCR didn't approve it.
Was there?
Council has been working on that diligently up until this point where, where, where it was taken care of.
Was there any payment or consideration made in connection with the easement?
Yes, there was. That was kind of, it kept going back and forth, and I think it's $2,600. I don't know how the actual amount right here.
And has that easement been recorded, or is it still in process?
I think it's being recorded as we speak.
Great.
Susan Murphy was the, was our lead on that effort, working with the state. And Joe Muschino was the help in getting that over the finish line last week.
Great. Bill, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Liz?
So Randy, is this, this $70,700, this is in addition to $120?
Well, we don't know what the, the cost of putting in the main is because all the costs have gone up.
Okay.
The $120 will help that. This is for the engineering services to help us get the permitting, analyzing the bid results, bidding it out, preparing the construction documents, onsite construction services, and maintaining any installation of the, into the new main.
Okay.
So it's basically all the engineering services we need to install this main.
Okay, okay. And the funding, this comes out of the sewer budget, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay, I know we've worked with Weston and Sampson before, so I'm assuming that you're happy with, with their work?
Yes.
Okay, all right, no other questions?
So Randy, are any supplies being delivered, or is this just services? I'm talking about delivered under this contract.
It's just services, basically. Services and work.
Got it.
So they're going to supply an engineer at, at the, at the time of installation to record everything, to make sure it goes in properly according to the plans. And they're bidding it out, and they're doing all the, all the paperwork for the bids and the bid opening and whatnot.
And I, I see the, the term of the contract is through June 30th of 2025. Do you expect all work to be completed by then?
Yes.
Great. Tom, anything you wanted to add?
Oh, I'm good, thank you.
Comments?
I just had one more question. No, that's okay. So just looking at the, to confirm the payment terms, it's, it'll be billed time and materials not to exceed $70,700, is that right?
I, I think so. I, again, I don't have the details of that.
Okay.
One second here.
They usually bill us as they do the work.
Okay. Okay, thank you, no other questions?
Members of the public? Yes, sir.
I wasn't going to say anything. Clark Fraser, 50, Bonnie Brier Circle, and member of the Sewer Commission. I signed the easement last week, so.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that.
Last Tuesday.
Okay.
We ran down out of our meeting to get that done because, you know, I waited seven years for it. I found a 2015 report that outlined all this work that was done initially, so.
I will make a motion to approve the agreement with Weston and Sampson Engineers Incorporated for the Stoddard's Neck Sewer Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $70,700.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Okay, now we turn to, uh, probably one of the most important items on the agenda. Um, recognition of Mildred M. Fisher's 100th birthday, and that is my mother. So, uh, we have a certificate of congratulations that I would like to read into the record. Presented to Mildred M. Fisher in recognition of a very special occasion, your 100th birthday. The Select Board, on behalf of the Town of Hingham, hereby takes this opportunity to wish you a joyous 100th birthday on May 26, 2024. A proud alumna of both Temple University and Villanova University, your dedication to education as a teacher and school administrator has inspired countless students over the years. Your leadership as past president of the Sarasota Manatee Chapter of the National Council of Jewish Women reflects your vibrant community spirit. From Lower Merion to Siesta Key to Linden Ponds, you, you continue to spread joy, to spread joy and love. On this momentous occasion, we join the entire Hingham community in wishing you many more years of cherished time with family and friends. I'm hoping it will be signed by my friends, Bill Ramsey and Liz Klein.
Be an honor.
Be honored to sign it, yes. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Do you have the same middle name?
No.
Oh.
The M for her is her maiden name, Mervis.
So I heard, do you, do you get a letter from the president when you turn 100 or?
I, I put in the application, we'll see what happens.
Oh, you put an application, did?
I did.
Well, you have it from Bill Ramsey, so.
And I also, I, I also put it in with.
But Al Roker, doesn't Al Roker do something?
Yes.
Smokers?
Yeah, right, right, right.
Okay.
Excellent, very.
Great.
Yes.
We now go to public comment. Are there members of the public who have comments on items not covered by the agenda? Hearing none, we move to the Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Uh, leave, Tom, you are on deck.
Sure, the only thing I have to report tonight is a one-day local license I issued, um, last week, is, uh, for the Summerfest, um, 2024, um, event at, uh, St. John's, the Evangelist Parish. It'll be held on Sunday, June 9th with a rain date of Sunday, June 16th, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM with an estimated attendance of 120 and there will be a police detail at that 120-person event.
Yeah. So, did we lose Heidi or she, uh?
I was speaking.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Liz?
Um, the Memorial Day Ceremony, Tom, I don't know if you have the details, I believe it's Monday at 10:00 AM?
Uh, it is at 11:00.
11?
Yes.
11:00 AM?
Actually, before you continue, Heidi, you walked out, but I neglected to give you the opportunity to give a report because I think you, you attended an event over the weekend where I saw you, maybe you can report on that?
Oh, sure. I attended the Battle of Grape Island, um, which was.
Did we win?
We did win.
Unlike the battle a month before, at Lexington and Concord, where we didn't, so, yes.
As I understand, um, we saved one of the local farms from the, uh, British and all the provisions on the island and it was a wonderful reenactment, even though it was raining a little bit, so all in all, a great success.
Yes, great, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, just wanted to invite everyone to the Memorial Day Ceremony, um, on Monday. Also, just wanted to thank the community for coming together last week to support one of our residents and their family. Um, it's Adelia the Wonder Girl, um, our, our hearts are with her and her family, um, and the community really stepped up and, and showed up. Nearly 300 people came together for a car parade under short notice and I just wanted to share a note that was sent, um, from the family to the Hingham Police Department. Um, thank you so much for all that you did to help our town come together to show our love and support for Adelia. Your department is what makes our town community a great one and I certainly agree, so wanted to share that with everyone.
Wow, thank you. Bill?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Um, I was just going to also add the Battle of Grape Island was a great success. Um, and Paul Healy was a master, master of ceremonies. Um, the, uh, the weather was unforgiving, but Hingham prevailed, so it was a great success. And so with that, we move to the next item on our agenda, um, which will be an executive session with the Personnel Board under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel. I will make the declaration that before I entertain a motion to go into executive session under I, item 18, 18 of the agenda, I hereby declare that discussions of this agenda item in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, negotiating position of the town.
So I'd make a motion to, uh, to enter executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3. The Board will not reconvene in open session after the executive session.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. We will now adjourn into executive session.